Go ahead and call this meeting of the Eastern Delaware County Joint Recreation District to order. Can I please get a roll call?
Ms. Watson?
Here.
Mr. Coy?
Here.
Ms. Greger?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Ms. Muzakia?
Here.
Ms. Sabada? I expect her to be just a few minutes late, but we do have five members. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for attending. We are so glad to see so many people here this evening. Um, there we go. Before we get started, we have Mayor of Sunbury, Mayor St. John, who's going to get us started here, and then we'll turn it over to Fezuti Solutions. Thank you.
Sure.
Absolutely.
A little sound check. Can you hear me? All right. Well, good evening. This is a great turnout. I think they were hoping to have 70 people. I think we got more than that. This is excellent. So my role tonight is just to lay the foundation. There's been a lot of work that's happened over the past two years, and I was involved in a lot of that upfront, but the JRD Board, the Joint Recreation District Board right here, has really been running with it for the past eight or nine months. So let's go back in time. January 30th, 2024, where were you? How was it? The state of the city for the city of Sunbury? And this is what I said. I said, "The Sunbury's future is promising, and I invite you to join me as we move forward together to my local government partner. Sunbury seeks collaboration with you. Let's listen to our constituents and cooperate on establishing a joint recreation district to realize a community center." One of the main things, like my main job, is to take resident feedback to my city council, and if we can't solve the issue that the residents are coming to me for, I have to go to other public entities, and we have to try to solve the public's problem. That is my number one job. And Sunbury, I mean, the bottom line is we can accomplish a lot more together. I'm going to tell you why, some of the reasons why Sunbury, Berkshire, and Galena are the entities that are going to do that, and maybe why it doesn't align with the Big Walnut School District, or including Trenton Township, Harlem, et cetera. I'm going to hit on some of those, some of those details, but the main goal was to realize a community center. So if you think to March 4th, 2024, that was just a month and a half later. I remember that day because that was the Harlem Wizards game. And before the Harlem Wizards game, I came and pitched this idea to Administrator Tyler Lane and Trustee DeSantis from Berkshire Township. Hey, what if we worked together? And they were like, dude, we're all in. I'm like, whoa, that's a lot easier than I thought it was going to be. Next stop, Galena. Call Mayor Canell. He's new on the job, right? He's like, love it. Great idea. All the while in the background, here's what's going on. Harlem Township and Westerville merging. Oh, my God. Okay. Because our initial goal was to get as many of the different communities together on one page and do this as a broad community. What we found out pretty quickly is when we went to approach Trenton Township, that would have been a nice squared-off boundary, line up with the Fire District, the B S T and G Joint Recreation District, has a little bit of a ring to it. Trenton Township said no. So we were like, whoa, okay, we had all this positive momentum. What do we do? Their reason was that they have a big preservation parks project underway, and even though we're like, this isn't really like Preservations Park in Dorman, this is more like a recreation district, and we're shooting for a community center. Regardless, they didn't join us. So, you know, then we thought about, what about Genoa Township? Genoa Township already has a park and recreation levy. Their taxes are quite a bit higher than the rest of the Big Walnut Local School District, and it, pretty quickly, like we started landing on, oh, my goodness, Berkshire, Sunbury, and Galena might be it. But when it came down to it, there are a whole lot of reasons why we ended up where we are tonight. But I would say one of the main ones is voter behavior. If you go back seven years ago, there's been several instances where Berkshire, Sunbury, and Galena have had to vote on issues like the school bond. So think of the high school quarry run elementary. There's been several fire district levies and bonds over that point, including a replacement levy and a bond effort to build a second station. And most recently, we had the library where they're going to go through the expansion. And what I can tell you about Sunbury, Berkshire, and Galena, and you should be proud if you live in one of those communities, is overwhelmingly and consistently, those voters have carried those levies, those bonds, and those public projects over the finish line. Most recently, if you want to take the library levy that just passed, Sunbury, Berkshire, and Galena passed the library expansion by 63%, whereas all of the rest of the Big Walnut School District, and this is not us bashing the rest of the school district, okay, I promise you, I'm just trying to draw your attention to, this is not simply an emotional decision. This is a data-driven decision. My voters, Sunbury voters, empowered me and said, "You have to go get us a community center." So we are partnering in the most logical way that we possibly can to achieve that. The other parts of the school district voted at 49.5%, with Harlem being below at 40%. So what did we do? We formed an exploratory group that looked at other joint recreation districts. We looked at voter habits. We looked at, that library levy, by the way, the one that just passed, barely, we didn't pass 55% to 45%. That was a $0.25 per day for the average homeowner, less than $100 per year. I know things are tight. I'm just showing that, you know, when we're talking orders of magnitude, when you're talking about an entire population of the community, a quarter a day, that generates a $20 million expansion for the library. Here's the bottom line. I'm proud of the thoughtful approach Sunbury, Berkshire, and Galena are taking. Do I wish it was going faster? Sure. I've learned a lot that if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. Do I want to get this right? Undoubtedly. Do I only want to hear from people that are in favor of the community center? Of course not. I and the Joint Recreation Board want to hear from everyone, or at least a representative sample of the population. I think we've got a good start going tonight. At the end of the, at the end of the day, this will most likely result in the need for public financing, most likely a voted bond or a levy. A representative sample of the population is so important at the front end of this due diligence. What you say matters. What you say tonight and what you write down, and what you talk to our consultants about and any public official, it's going to get documented. And that's very important because it determines the trajectory of where this effort goes. In the past, in the mid-2000s, there was an effort similar to this one, and it failed miserably. Some of you may, maybe were a part of it. My interpretation of what happened is communication failed. Assumptions were made, specifically assumptions like we should use the entire Big Walnut School District boundary. And at the end of the day, when it came down to a vote of what the community could pallet, what they would pay for, the voters said no. We can debate, we can debate whether a community center is wanted, needed, what goes in it, what goes out of it, what's in scope, out of scope, built now or built later. At the end of the day, the voters always get it right. It's our job, those of us that work in the public sector, to ensure we have a solid and sound cross-section of those likely to vote for or against an initiative like a community center. It will be the job of the JRD Board behind me to bring forward the most sound plan based on the most reliable data, market study analysis, public feedback, current and future market conditions, infrastructure assumptions, land costs, how and to what degree to partner with the private sector. And at the end of the day, the JRD Board has a tall task ahead of them. I challenge them at the outset to work expeditiously and prudently. Is that true?
Yes.
Understanding that they're a public entity and they're spending public dollars to perform the due diligence on your behalf. Realistically, this board has one shot to get it right, to thread the needle in space and time to get you, the public, behind them, behind a plan that will succeed. I support this board, and I'm here to help them where they need me. With that said, thank you for being here. Can't wait to hear your feedback. Hope you hear it throughout the evening. I do want to introduce our board. From Sunbury, we have Bernie Cooy, Johnny Greger. From Berkshire, we have Maria Sabada. We have Greg Elliott. And from Galena, we have Chairwoman Hallie Watson and Todd.
Muzakia.
Muzakia. With that said, I yield my time to Jim. Don't name your last name. Thank you.
I always get nervous when someone yields time to me because that sounds way, way too official. This is wonderful to see so many people here. So appreciate on behalf of everybody. I'd be happy to talk to you. I like to wander. I'm sorry I've been making coffee since 5:00 this morning, so I'll try to hold on here. You want to get me in for a little bit, and that's just to really welcome you and tell you a little bit about the firm and what we'll be presenting tonight, and more importantly, what we're hoping to get back from you. This is really an exciting opportunity. I had about a decade career in the public sector, working in economic development and as a city manager. Flew over to the private sector with a goal of trying to help government and public sector do it right. Get it right. That means not overbuilding, not building the wrong thing, not paying too much for the things that you want, having a schedule that's realistic. All those items is really what we do on a day-to-day basis, and I've been doing it for quite a while. Tonight, though, this is really about you. This is an opportunity for you to start talking and sharing ideas about the good, the bad, the ugly, what you're looking forward to, what you'd like to see, some of the things you don't want to see. We'll identify and talk through a little bit of the process. Sophia Alonso with Fezuti Solutions will be the project manager on our part, and she'll be talking through a little bit more of the details. But really, the important part is understand that the more involved that you are, the better the outcome will be, whatever that outcome may be. And that's really part of the process. There's no preconceived idea. We know the direction that you want to take. We want to learn more about that, and this is going to be an ongoing process. It is so important to get public feedback to help us understand so we don't propose something that's too big, too large, too expensive, in the wrong spot, and all those other items. So we thank you so much. We're going to be, a lot of us walking around taking notes. There may be some follow-up questions, but I want to get to the fun part. Mayor, appreciate your wisdom as the kickoff, and of course, the board for their direction. So with that, I'm going to let Sophia come up, talk a little bit about the process, and again, have fun. The one thing I will add, Mayor, that when we're working with a lot of communities, we hear a lot from the public and some of the public entities that we want this really badly. And one of the things that we've found that sometimes when you want things really badly, you can do them really badly. So part of our job is to make sure that we focus on doing it the right way and presenting you the information you need. So with that, Sophia, come up.
Before Sophia gets started, I just wanted to let people in the back know that there is some room over here in the side if anybody wants to move up. Unfortunately, I don't think there's any chairs that we can put up over there, but at least there's a little more standing room, and hopefully you can hear a little better. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming tonight. If you have any difficulty hearing me, just let me know. My name's Sophia Alonso. I am a project manager for Fezuti Solutions, all managing the Eastern Delaware Joint Recreation District feasibility study for this community center. So with me today are some of our team members. We have Keith Hall and PD Freeland with MSA Design, and Ashley Sen, Jim Russell, obviously, with Fezuti Solutions. And then we have Brooke Stein with Urban Decision Group here today. So you'll hopefully hear from all of us tonight, but I want to thank you guys for your time again. I want to go briefly over the scope and why we're here today. So we have been brought on to help prepare a feasibility study for a potential community center for the Eastern Delaware Joint Recreation District. So through this feasibility study, we'll be going through a number of things, including a market study, a cost analysis. We'll be doing various benchmarking activities through other similar communities and similar community centers in the area. So we'll be studying what's surrounding you, what is missing, what could be a benefit to the community as well. We have been brought on for a six-month engagement, so we started in September of '25, and we're anticipating this to be wrapped up, at least just the study portion, in March of '26. And as I mentioned, some of the areas of those feasibility studies include the market area, some community engagement. So like, we are here tonight. We'll also be having a public survey go out. There is a QR code located throughout the survey that you can take when you get home, pass along to your friends, have people take it. It will be open throughout the engagement and for a few months or weeks after this as well. So feel free if your opinions change throughout the process, take it again. We want to hear all of the feedback that you have, all of your thoughts and opinions, and as anything comes up, we want to hear those changes as well. Additionally, we'll be doing some cost analysis work. So what would the cost be? You know, we don't know what the programming is currently because we want to hear from you before that goes into any, any type of survey or feedback. And so that cost analysis will come at a later point, but we are taking that into consideration. And so I'll get this handed over to Keith and PD. This will be the really exciting fun part when we start to actually hear from you guys, but thank you for your time tonight.
So welcome. This is exciting. It's great to walk in here and see all of you here tonight. This really is, because all of you are here and all you are willing to participate, that's going to make our job much more easier and much more real at the end of the day. As we go through this process, our ultimate goal is to put a feasibility study together. So what's that mean? We're going to study the financial feasibility of the project. Sophia mentioned we're going to look at the cost. We're going to look at what the project costs. There's land acquisition costs, there's building costs, but there's also costs with running a center like this. So what are the long-term costs associated with it, and can it sustain itself over a period of time? So they're not constantly maybe coming back to you for additional revenue, or they're raising, you know, raising the cost to get into the, into the center. That's an important aspect of it. The site feasibility, where is it going to be located? Number one, we have made no decisions yet. We don't know. This is step one. Yeah, we've been working on it since September, but what we've been working on is just, what's the approach? How are we going to engage the community? How are we going to push this forward? So we don't know where the site is. That's yet to be determined. Programming, that's the big thing. We're going to talk a little bit about that tonight. What do you want the center to be? What do you want in the center? Gyms, aquatics, classrooms, community space, whatever that means. We need to build that into the project at the end of the day so we can determine what the size of the project would be and what's the size of the site would be. Then we can start looking at what the cost of the project would be, and then start to really put the public pieces together at that point. And then, most importantly, as I see it, the public perception of the project. Is this something you all want? Is there support for a project like this? And as I mentioned, this process is, we're just starting. We haven't made any decisions. That's part of being transparent and open. We are going to, you'll find out through our presentation tonight, that, you know, we have online surveys. It should be a continuous flow of information and flow of participation in the project. The community engagement piece of this is the primary thread that pulls the entire feasibility study together. We don't work in a vacuum. We don't go away and just design pretty buildings as much as we would like to, trust me. But we know that our most successful buildings are the ones that are received well by the community and meet your financial expectations. At the end of the day, we're right there with you. We treat your money like it's our money at the end of the day. This is just where, I was going to give this to you, whatnot. No.
So this just outlines our community engagement process. So this is our first meeting. This is the first time we are all getting together. And as you can see, there's a lot of tasks that we're trying to do. So we're going to try to get some of this, through some of this programming tonight because as Keith mentioned, as has been mentioned, we really need to understand what it is you all are interested in so we can start trying to put all those pieces together. But I want you to understand that this is just the first of three meetings. So our second meeting, and these second, two meetings do not have, second, third meeting do not have dates yet, but we're aiming to meet again in probably January, February, and then again in March. So the meeting after this, we're going to take all of the information that you all shared with us tonight and present some potential solutions, some potential ideas. Again, no decisions have been made, but just so we can really sort of gauge the interest based on the feedback that we have received to that date. And then again, modify and refine and have another open discussion about some of those ideas initially before we move into the final workshop, which is slated for March right now. So even with that final workshop, that's really our plan to kind of present a recommendation based on everything that we're gathering and everything else that we've been doing and all of our conversations with you about the recommendations for next steps to move forward. But even at that moment, we are still going to be asking for your feedback and incorporating into refinements along the way, and this is a study. So as it becomes a real project, if it becomes a real project, there will be additional opportunities in the future for continued feedback. So I do want you to understand that there's just a lot of information out there, and as everyone's been saying, no decisions have been made to date. Concurrent to this, there will be an online survey, and some of the questions in that survey will be similar to some of our discussion hopefully tonight. So we do want you to make sure that you take that and have others take it as well, and that QR code will be at the end. I'm going to try to go through this really quickly because I really do want to get to the part where we have a discussion. Just for quick reference, these are four possible facilities that we thought you all might be familiar with or use right now to meet some of your recreation and community needs. They are, and I will read them for those of you who can't see. The Delaware Community Center YMCA, the Westerville Community Center, the Belheim Park in New Albany, and the Mount Vernon YMCA. We are just throwing these up for reference. As we go through this, if there's parts of these facilities that you're currently using, you want us to come back and talk about these a little more, we're happy to do it. If there's other facilities that you are currently using, and you like aspects of those, please let us know because that's really helpful information for us. Just going to give you this really quick. And the Park in New Albany, they are building, this is mostly outdoor fields. I'm sure most of you know they are building an indoor field house right now.
So what does a community center look like? Most importantly, it's a multi-generational facility. So it's for everybody, from the littlest kids to the oldest adults. That is, that is critical to the success of these things. You've got to put the right programming in the right places to attract, to allow everybody in the community to see a project, to see a facility like this as a hub to come together and socialize. So we're just going to run through, I'm going to run through very quickly, a bunch of images just to get everybody sort of warmed up as to what these things start to look like. They can be big, they can be small, they can do a lot of different things. So cardio and fitness equipment, that's typically a given. We're seeing a lot of, you know, weightlifting and different versions of, of different levels of equipment that are incorporated into these things. Strength training, very big. Functional training, very big. Fitness classrooms, so classroom fitness. So having the right classrooms to do multiple, you know, multiple different types of fitness. Wood floor courts. Rubberized floor courts. Why do you have both? Well, the wood floor has limited use to it. I'm really basketball, court sports, volleyball, that sort of thing. The rubberized floor opens up some other uses. So it's just a more of a multi-use gym at that point in time. Indoor walking track, very popular. Indoor leisure pools, aquatics, usually typically a big piece of these facilities. Recreation and lap pools. Competitive lap pools, bring the community together and have competitions. Child watch, so parents can drop their kids off, especially the smaller ones, and go and enjoy the activities in the, in the center itself. Billiards and game areas. You know, this is really towards probably some of the older generation because the younger kids are more on digital stuff. But if we can, again, getting back to that multi-generational aspect, if we can bring them together in their space, then they can exchange information and influence each other. Demonstration cooking kitchens. This is like a big trend right now. This is a hot item, and a lot of fun at the end of the day. And you can just see by the picture, I'm going to, you're going to hear me continue to say multi-generational. It's not just for the adults, it's just for the kids, and you look at the lower left-hand picture. Outdoor playgrounds. So not only inside, but what are, how are we going to engage maybe the exterior? There's a lot, depending on the size of the site, there's lots of opportunity to do lots of things outside. Natural playgrounds. I think I saw one back over here when I went in. It looked really cool. Outdoor gathering space. You might see a lot of these, like at breweries and pickleball places and that sort of thing. Though this can be part of it too. Fitness areas outside. Outdoor walking trails. So if you start to get the picture, the recreation center can sort of be sitting in the center on a larger site where there's parkland surrounding it. An outdoor leisure pool. Outdoor recreational lap pools. And then outdoor sports fields. That could be natural grass, that could be turf, that could be courts, tennis courts, things of that nature. Indoor play is a big thing. You know, community centers, likely you buy a membership. Likely you want to maybe, if there's an indoor play space, if you put that on the side where there is no, where you don't require a membership, and it's open to the public and coming in use, it's kind of a cool idea. We just did that down and up around, and it's been very successful. The locker rooms and restrooms. Esports, big, 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 big thing. And then these rooms also serve as classrooms for learning how to use computers and use software. Senior areas, again, big, big thing. Cracks, gaming. Redable party rooms, huge revenue source. Want these things to generate revenue so they can keep the cost down. Program rooms, classrooms, to do crafts, artwork, whatever it may be, gaming, art classrooms. And then multipurpose and community space for events like tonight. You know, this is, this is huge. This is sort of a newer thing coming into these things where you can go in and have small weddings and those sort of things too. And they are revenue generating, not just from the immediate community, but it allows people from outside the community to come in and use the community center. Indoor social gathering space. This, to me, is like the heart and soul of these things. You walk in the center, you want to hang out, see your friends, talk, go work out, maybe you go have a cup of coffee somewhere afterwards or play a game. These things really make these spaces happen. Reboot workspace, you know, think of the Cohatch idea. You know, if you're a member at the center, you can come in, go work out, go get cleaned up, go off in a corner, and, and have a workspace, and it's all built in for you. Very popular. And then the snack bar, grab-and-go areas, that gets to the food, the level of food that we would think about serving in a space like this. Cafe, it's just a higher level approach. And then, that's it. So we're here to talk, right? We've been saying that all night. We've thrown some questions up here to get the conversation going. I would like to start off, I think the appropriate place to start off is with question number two. What excites you, if anything, about this? And then feel free to, you know, just random comments or whatever, that's fine. But, you know, be respectful of other people, let people speak, you know, everything they have to say. And then we're going to try to capture all that, all that information. As Katie mentioned, as others mentioned, this is an opportunity to collect data from you guys and kind of get a base understanding for where we stand as we move forward with the feasibility study.
So Keith, if I can add, so if you want to speak, stand up. Make sure you speak as loud as you possibly can. Want to make sure that it gets picked up in the recording. You don't have to come to the front to be in the microphone. But again, we do ask you to stand and just speak clearly, and again, one at a time so it gets recorded properly.
Can I start by asking a question?
Yes.
I'm curious, can we ask where everyone is from with a show of hands, just what community they're representing? I think that would be wonderful to know.
So Berkshire? Okay. Galena? And then Sunbury. Other, other, okay. All right, but that's good to know too.
So what adds a lot of interest for me and I think a lot of families is when you talk to me about a revenue-generating community space. So my co-host, hard to say, even more of a theater setup for the, for the stage. There are a lot of activities to do within this area, like dance and theater and a number of things. We're currently, you know, scouts, a lot of different things, but we need that sort of setup. You're paying schools. They're also competing in school activities, so those things are always available. But there's, there's revenue generation to be, to be had there to pay for a lot of the great things you've been talking about there. So I would say as part of your, as part of your study, I would ask that you sort of understand what that opportunity is. We're talking about dance studios, theater companies, all those different things that would provide for that space and keep it booked. Probably more than you think. Give you an example, a little transparency. Give you an example, a little transparency, so I own Sunbury and Four My Hearts, which is based here in Sunbury. They've been around now for about two and a half, two and a half years, just off the put on trend. But anyway, a lot of involvement, most of the kids, you know, come from here. The shows, which are held at Bell Cast, it runs from seventy-five to maybe from seventy-five to ninety kids are involved in the shows. So if these, you know, if these kids can be involved, be on stage, and so. So a great thing is it's a revenue generator, it's a constant source of, you're beginning to pull out that space. And you'll take the other, it's going to be exposed to all the other entities that you have. Dublin has that model, so I mean, I understand you have the opportunity to jack space and everything on it. But really do think that could be a important piece of making sure you have a large group of revenue generation coming in. It's not so, so you don't have to raise the rates potentially for a long time and people that just probably have worked in. I think people experience, these centers are a great thing, I think I've had, you know, most of the places I've lived as an adult, Arizona, different places, they've all had that sort of entity and, you know, it's really benefited. I, I grew up in Chicago and I didn't have a gym to go into. Who knows what path I was on now, I was a cheerleader. So it's great for kids to have someone to go after school, you know, if they don't have anywhere else to go.
So I have a question for you here, you mentioned, do you, I, this is, this is great conversation on the idea of a, of a community theater type of thing. Do you see it as, you mentioned Dublin, Dublin has tiered seating and a full-on stage and full-on production. Do you see the need being that, or do you see the need where we have a multi-use room, not much like, call it a high school, I guess, that has a stage at one end of it that can support that kind of use?
First thing you said is probably the idea.
Okay.
I mean, I think you would, for some of those entities that I mentioned, dance studios, theaters, companies, that kind of thing. You know, they would, they would make the most out of it, but I think any, any offering, you know, is more than we have now. And I think, you know, for times, those kinds of groups would make that work. But I think you would, I think you would probably occupy that space more, the more it's built out and have more flexibility to enhance.
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, I really love the idea of community center with having that kind of activity and everything. I have small kids, I had a kid give one child work and everything. But I would like to, I have a special request, like you said that the goal is to have a self-sustainable model. The many generations from different models and the thing that we have at that. I would like to also consider a Black Swan events, like something like COVID-19 or something where it's unpredictable and where during the time, some of those fitness centers and other things might not have the same kind of people during a normal year or a normal event. So I would like you to consider the alternatives, budget or funding during that period and stuff like that. Having that impact on the society back, or like towards taxes or something, so that is, I just like. I'm not saying it is going to happen or it is, I don't want that to happen, but.
Sure.
In my thirty years of my life, I have seen such and such things, I don't know if I'm going to see it anytime, but I don't want to, but I just want city to consider that.
So I actually went, I attended meetings with another municipality where I lived previously and went through, into the build-out of the community center. And one thing that I noticed, so it was a smaller community center, it was more neighborhood-based, but one thing that really played into focus was multipurpose rooms. So we had a lot of multipurpose rooms that were flexible, so like we could have yoga classes in one room and then have, you know, a scout community in another room or like a dance class. So one thing I would consider is, you know, look at all abilities, so look at all, so we're all different ages here, all abilities. I'm a cheerleader myself, but my husband is not, he wouldn't care about that one bit. He would love the remote workspace, but I don't think it has to be, you know, completely formal. Maybe just have it like a quiet room type of thing. Because we are a smaller community, but we are growing, so that's something that we might pull up as well. Learning our now may not be our need for five, ten years when we see this project kind of push. So that's something I would consider is, you know, just not what we need presently, but what we could need for the future. We're just going to continue to grow, so I know I can be involved without all this and with that.
That's right, yeah. Future growth is definitely a part of the initial planning is, because yes, you're correct. Communities grow, this community is definitely growing, this county is definitely growing. And things are going to change, you know, you can only afford to build this on day one, right? But as in ten years, the community may have grown and we may need to double the size of the fitness area or add a classroom or add to aquatics, whatever it may be, wherever the shortcoming is, so that's, that's a good point.
To that point then, will you like build out what our.
Could you please stand up?
At that point then, will you build out what like our ultimate would be? And then we scale back so that we could see what the future plan would be? Or would we just be building one and then in five years, oh no, we need to add a room, hope six years?
No, we will, in the initial stages, you know, it's, it's the wish list, right? So it's rightsizing for the community at this time and putting the cost to it and evaluating it and seeing what that means. If it is determined that the number is too much, then we're going to have some conversations about maybe doing it back. But at the same time, allowing for the future growth to occur within the facility. So what that means is like, you know, if there's an area of the building where it makes sense and an addition would go there, but we made the decision to put an outdoor pool there, then you don't want to tear up the outdoor pool for the addition in ten years. So put the outdoor pool somewhere else so the addition can happen. So it's planning around some of those options.
Because my train of thought is even planning the land out. So if you're looking even at outdoor pool in a facility, are you really looking at a larger plot of land before we even go into building it? Because like we all know, this community is growing.
Yeah.
There is a good chance that this will have to be.
Yeah, that would have to be taken into consideration too, yes, exactly.
Yes, sir. I'm from Sunbury. So I would say definitely the, the growing studies needs to take into consideration because this is the second exit of the Gemini. So definitely there is no way we can avoid that, that growth because that area is already packed. So if people wants to build a house, they want to move, this is the second exit they can come. So we need to be ready for that. So that's why I would recommend if you consider future, within ten years, population growth so that you can consider that into this planning. And there is no way we can avoid this. I know we like to be in the countryside, but there is only much you can do. So we have to be also considering that. I think community center is one of the best way to invest into our properties and where we live because that adds value. We see in the Dublin city, that where I came from, the community center is really very powerful investment. So we should be mindful about really considering that. But the population, I think definitely within ten years, what are we expecting in Sunbury? What are we expecting in other communities? That would be determining to the ideas that you are going to.
Just to pick up on that, and I know the mayor had mentioned too. I mean, a lot of this early work is dealing with the demographics, understanding growth patterns of, to look at a planning window that's going to be past ten years. And there's strategies that will come along with that too, both in terms of real flexibility built to the building. Because the one thing we can't predict, I mean, how many of you thought ten years ago pickleball would actually be something? It was all racquetball courts, that's what we were playing and all of a sudden now we're hitting the pickle, at least that's what I thought. I don't play it, I don't know what that is. But the idea is how do those spaces become flexible so you're not building them again? You're redoing and reusing them. But at the same time, every project that we work on, building in the ability to expand is critical because you don't want to start on a site, if you have a building, it's going to take up two acres by itself and you buy a three-acre site, after you park it, you're not growing anymore and that can't happen. And so that's part of the strategy and it's also part of the cost analysis, right? We have to understand those items. And there's also a lot of strategy behind this. As an example, City of Upper Arlington and that community center that we all worked on was a landlocked site. They had one site, they don't have a lot of other sites anyway. But what they did in that project had built-in expandability that in the short term is leased space to a partner. So and the partner being the Ohio State Western Medical Center, who is paying rent, paying dollars to have program space in that building. As those leases burn off and the community grows, they will take that space over, but it's actually being paid for by someone else. And so those are the strategies that we'll start looking at to see how do we help you keep the cost down? How do you get the cost recovery that you need so that membership rates are reasonable for the residents who are building it? But then also how you plan for the future. So all those, we love to hear it because usually that's the one that people don't always kind of get. So future planning and flexibility and having enough space are critical elements.
Yeah, I was going to say thanks for that. And I grew up in Mount Vernon, and when I was a kid, I went to preschool at the YMCA, got my swimming lessons there, like sports there growing up. And now I've worked in New Albany for nine years, so like using Beveldheimer or even Rocky Forest close by. There's a golf park and a nice outdoor walking path. They also have the height center, which has a lot of community events and has a really cool, I've done cooking class there before. So just thinking of those are great ideas to like think through for that. And also it's nice with like the height center too, being one I know you didn't have up there. You can go for your workout, have a sauna and steam room that worked half the time while I was there. But you could also go to Fox in the Snow or Starbucks and meet with people after your workout too, so thinking through some of that stuff.
My name's John, I'm from Berkshire Township. So just a couple things, you gave me your question about what excites me about this, right? So I'm a member of the Westerville Community Center, okay? And, and I go there because what we do is we do laps from, like, if you can't do it, then go down here. So I think when you go through this, I think you're kind of already saying this, but I would, you know, four of my neighbors are also members of the Westerville Community Center, right? So we go because that's the place you got to go to get what you want to get. So I would, I would, when the surveys allow, hopefully people who are going other places, they will respond because that event I think helped to set the priority, right? Because I'm not, I don't live in Westerville, so I got to pay fifty-six dollars a month. But if I live in Westerville, it's a lot less than that, right? So it would be great to have something up here to be able to do that. But I would just focus on what are your priorities in the short term? And then as the other folks were saying here, like what's the long-term strategy, right, that you can grow? There are really, I think a lot of people live in this area and go out of places to do stuff if they just can't do it here. And I think that's got to be the, I think, the key.
How many people in here are members of the Southern? The primarily Westervilles? Yeah, okay, it's good to know, we need to add that question to our survey. Okay.
But it's on the survey, put it to the survey.
So speaking back off what you're saying, you may want to look at the Westerville Community Center, look at the funding from Highlands, their park, their community, Flag Center.
Yeah.
They've, I know, I haven't specifically the money, so what's gone where. I'm pretty sure their recent expansion, a lot of it is funded from some of the, this is all in early.
I'm hoping that you will look to it some redundancies. And, you know, we're just building a nineteen thousand dollar addition to the library, which has a lot of community space in it. I would think that maybe this facility could focus on things that are not going to be there and don't have too much crossover between the two. And I hope you keep the cost down for those of us in poor township.
Way back there in the back.
Well, adding on to the poorer township, we're from Aralama. And yeah, so we're the forty percent people who don't vote for anything. But there is a, you know, certain population there that is like jumping into big, go, go, go. And I, we came actually from friends in township just fifty years ago, also the forty percent. And, you know, my grandkids live here now. I, I'd like to propel that and be able to support that, even though we're not in Berkshire or Sunbury. Or, you know, I, we would do that, we'd like to put out there how we can be a part.
Hi, I'm Hannah. I don't have any specific revenue generating ideas or anything like that, I just did want to share my experience with the project. Lived here a couple of years ago and I think right off of that, I emailed Sunbury's name, John, like, when are you going to put a light at the end of my street and when are we going to have a rec center? And he was very responsive, actually, it was a couple days, I was very impressed. But I'm a five-year-old son who is just into every activity currently and we're, you know, thriving. I work actually down at Oder Shoes, we go slow-lap down there, going to different areas for, to do hockey and soccer and everything. Some of those things we can get here and that's, that's great, other things you have to go farther away, which is more time or money. So just very excited about the prospect of something here. Additionally, the other thing I just wanted to say is I'm a social worker and I've worked with the littlest kids and I've worked with the older generations. And throughout my work, I've noticed the one theme for positive outcomes, no matter what anyone is going through at any period, is just the social support, social network, connection with your community. And the community center is just a huge way to accomplish that for so many people. Even if you're not someone who's excited or plans to use the community center regularly, it's still an opportunity to invest in your city, invest in your neighbors, give people opportunities for positive outlets, positive involvement in their community, which makes all of us happier, all of us safer.
I want to just, you know, she said about the hockey and, you know, hockey's sure not to.
Oh, yeah.
My mind about it, but my, my favorite area of hockey is growing especially in blue jackets, yeah. So I've worked with other townships and cities out of state like Detroit and they've got.
Ice everywhere.
A couple of, yeah, there's ice, places go everywhere up there.
Yeah.
So as a revenue generator, that could be something, I know, anybody has any kids in hockey, you know, it's expensive. It is very expensive to get into it, but it's also ice time, things like, yeah, where you can charge an organization money for the ice time and generate revenue that way.
Yeah.
So my thought is maybe an indoor, outdoor, both.
Okay.
Or an outdoor pond.
Okay.
Per se, if you want to call it that.
That's great.
But the other point I wanted to make was I really, really appreciate you guys having us in this type of environment to get our feedback, so thank you.
Yeah.
I can probably add a little bit. My name's Whit Wilson, I'm a member of the one of the classes as well as the one of the kids that I'm supporting. I'm here tonight listening to the song across, we are a hundred percent volunteer, no paycheck, absolute passion driven project. I go with it pretty much. And I would encourage you not to overlook these sports and even our little sports baseball as a revenue opportunity for the community. As you all well know, we are a moving athletic space at a rapid rate. We work very closely with the community, so they already have access to cleanup. I know that they have some plans to make improvements up there, but I think the mayor would attest that right now the fields are not in the best of shape. In a very limited indoor space, comes spring. And we all know mother nature can be very cruel to us, especially here. And we have dealt with everything under the sun, from hail and sideways rain to, and we grieve sometimes when the hits aren't prepared. When that happens, we work diligently to make it work for the kids, but often it's turning to. But often it's turning to the school system and trying to get into some of the indoor gyms at the local schools. Um, rightfully, it puts us at the bottom of the totem pole that exposes the middle school team. Get first in, have the facility as well as the best time. We make it work, but it's not real great to have your little first and second graders practicing lacrosse past their bedtime. It's already a challenge to get them to pay attention. It's also not really great when you have upwards of three thousand fifth and sixth grade boys in a small elementary school gym and you arm them to the lacrosse game. So, I'm sure that you all are kind of having the kids first, kids first and sports first kind mentality about this. And Bevelheimer is a lovely example in this community of a very large outdoor field space. Um, I don't know where they're putting that, but certain church allows you to operate year-round. Um, it's more expensive, but it's a different maintenance quality as well across. Uh, but that indoor space is also very important to many of the sports in this community where we have nowhere to go right now. And because we are a nonprofit, we work throughout the year in a fundraiser. We do have to rent the high school church, just so that that's out there, that is not free to us, because it's a nonprofit. Much of our fundraising throughout the year goes to do that, so that we can provide a great day and day experience. Because of that, we often become a close site for many of the teams throughout Central Ohio. Um, we play communities as far as Johnstown and Main City and everything in between, because they're playing on grass in the spring and they can't listen to the game. That fundraising, the church space allows us to do that. But I'm sure that the other youth sports groups, whether from soccer to baseball, even football, would love to be a part of the ongoing discussions to make sure that there is active space both indoor and out, to allow us to play throughout the year without having that large financial burden of things we're just trying to have to get testing.
Great. Can I chime in on, oh, sorry, I wanted to piggyback on that because I know Bart's here with baseball. My son and his friend are here. And this is such a passion of mine, kind of what she said, because there's nowhere for kids to go play sports right now, unless it's with the schools. And it saddens me as a father of three, that there's nowhere for them to go. Additionally, it saddens me even further is that, once you hit seventh grade, that's it for sports for some of the, some of the kids around here, which is super unfortunate. There's not, like, the middle school basket, the seventh grade basketball team only carries twelve kids. There's thirty, forty, fifty kids who want to play basketball. They have nowhere to go for basketball, or they gotta drive to Westerville, or they gotta go someplace else. So, to me, it's super important, I'm super passionate about that, because sports is a great outlet for young men and boys especially, where they're gonna go get into trouble and we don't want that. We want them occupied, we want them busy, we want them physical, that's how they stay focused, right? That's how they, they, they just grow and mature to, um, young men, and young women, not just men. Um, so, it's super important, just, you know, hearing you say that and knowing that that's been, uh, not a challenge, but it's, it's difficult because the school has their priorities, um, which they should. And it's hard when, and the school's been a wonderful partner of ours, um, but, you know, their athletes and student athletes take priority. Um, and so we kind of fall by the wayside. But, once you hit seventh grade, there's really not a lot of options for, for a lot of the kids. So, partnering with the, you know, youth sports organization here locally is super important. Um, and I just, I'm, thank you for, you know, saying something.
Yeah, I have these, there's actually about seventy percent of kids right now that's out there, they're all gathered by age, which I agree with, it's not hard for you to try to see to have the community. And many families can't afford the basketball court. And that early specialization and forces our kids to play year-round and play travel to have those opportunities often leads to that burden, that's mentioned with my initial burden. They will pull that out, so.
Or they're going to the communities, because they're a little over-enrolled and they, they go all the way up to the next school, to the next school.
Yeah, the interesting part about New Albany, Bevelheimer was really the first part that they did as part of the joint park district, for a lot of the same reasons, because of the way the land was getting, you know, consumed by the development. And so that was a priority to put those fields in, to be able to accommodate football, lacrosse, baseball and soccer, all in that development. And then the pressure, because they're also sharing the schools, and so the pressure on basketball, everything was a scheduling nightmare, which was part of which led to the fieldhouse that they're building. And it's gonna be a little bit of a diverse, because now they're kind of kicking the schools out of it, so they have a place for their recreational basketball, which goes from, you know, little kids all the way up to high school who want to keep playing. And so that kind of combination works. In this effort, part of the planning, and you mentioned like land planning and making sure, you know, we imagine that the first choice that you'll make is probably not to build everything that you want, including like fieldhouse boards, indoor fields and community center. But it's about, do you have a plan? Do you have a path? Are there opportunities for the board to start thinking and planning and working with you? So we don't lose track of that. These are all important ideas and you will end up with, here's what we think you can do in the near term, and here's what you can do in the long term, and you paint that entire picture. Because this is the time for your community to do the planning that you're doing, before everything gets bought up and developed, so. Something to think about.
So we have a important township, so keep that in mind. So you have a study that you're doing now that should go into March. You've done other, um, you've been involved with other rec centers for up to around. Uh, I know you can't answer this definitively, but you have a, you know, are we talking a year, two years, five years before this is built? How far out do you imagine this is going to go?
So, that's to be determined. So, this, this study will take about six months to form together, so you're right, at March. Um, when that's complete, we're basically a fork in the road. So, the board at that time will look at the study and then start to determine what the next steps are. We will help them, obviously. Um, and, and then move forward from there. There are some big steps, so, you know, you heard mentioned tonight, the way it's gonna be financed, it's probably through some tax levying, right? So, that or other opportunities that may come up through the study, actually. Um, so, it's, it's, it can go as fast as you want, it can go as slow as you want. And if the momentum is behind it, um, you know, a support like tonight, then it will go very fast. You know, your, your mayor is very excited about this, it's, it's been a priority. Um, and that's, that's great. Um, and that's what it takes to make these things go forward in a much more efficient and effective way. So, if we get to the end of the study, this is what it is, this is what it's gonna cost, this is where, this is how we're gonna fund it. Everybody's excited about it. I would say get loud, get it on the ballot next year, that's where it ends up at. And then, you know, move forward with it at that point.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Hannah, um, I have two daughters, probably feeling a bit, oh, it's actually, I would love to matter, it's like, we don't know. But growing up, I am from Lawrence, Ohio, and we had a play ball, like, styles, we were involved in centers. And it was kind of like a workshop for being able to just like go in the family, me and my two sisters, our parents on Friday night. They have the lap pools, they have the gym, they have the sound, the steam room, they have everything. We would go and play basketball in the gym, and that's what we did on Friday nights. And I feel like as a parent, all I keep hearing from my dad is, "Person, never worry about it." So, they're on their phones, I don't know, maybe you have time after, would you have phones, you know, like, over? So having a place to relax, like, um, hanging out, really focus on wellness and you think for the community, it's really exciting.
You guys can choose.
I'm so far at the one, the quarter township as well. Currently, the board president for B W M C S A, which is the one I think, so-called, which they do. Um, to piggyback on the same program that we cross at, we're, we're at capacity. Our school loans are at capacity, our ball field are, our gyms are. Greg mentioned seventh grade basketball, my son is in seventh grade. He's a proud of the school team, but he's one of a number of kids that are gonna go to the Westerville Center and play this, this year. And actually, we have entire people on the team that's gonna try to play together if they want to play. As friends insanely. Um, but before we went that route, I did try to reach out to the basketball board to see, hey, what is the actual chairman of the field? And we see it, how, he's hitting up the league, he's good enough for his anger, old, who's in eighth grade to do this. Not, so there's, there's a ton of needs that we have for youth sports, like you mentioned. Um, one thing on the baseball and softball side, if this project goes that route, we don't feel, well, the one thing I would ask to take my consideration would be, there's, um, you know, making sure all the kids are able to, probably able to play those sports, whether it's basketball, pickleball, lacrosse, soccer, whatever you do. And that's because we have a little charter within our program. And the one thing we're not, we're not able to do currently is offer any challengers, which is an opportunity for kids four to eighteen to be able to play, who are physically, mentally challenged, um, they have to have certain facilities, or certain amenities, that facilities deal off by trying to, you know, because we are a five oh one, three nonprofit, decent school, property, which is great, um, but being volunteer-run, um, it's not profitable, you have to make those upgrades. Um, we talk about having these three counties involved, X, Y, whatever, there's, I would just, I would think, be thinking of all those kids that are in those communities to, are taking wherever it, we, we do it.
Yeah?
Couple things, apparently with the Friday night, nothing to do, type of, type of moment, we, uh, we realize that. We are a part of a great neighborhood, part of a great golf club, uh, we have a lot of, uh, participation in the other sports, football, basketball, cheer, gymnastics, and we're shooting all over. Uh, the ROI is there at one trip over to Saunders from North Star, making sun an hour, hour-long basketball practice. Uh, so, I guess, the one thing that's missing is actually literally what the name of this is, is communal. So, to bring everybody in from all different ages into a consolidated space where everybody has fun, plays together, works together, does all those activities together, uh, something that's wildly missing, we built it three and a half years ago, came over from Powell, uh, and Powell's rough with a whole bunch of fun stuff and little centers and activities and libraries and stuff, you know, so. I think it took you articulating that for me to recognize that, yeah, there is some big missing. And the ROI is there, anybody who's driven one practice can be bored with this. My one question though is, money is a force of progress and taxes. Is there anything else that anybody's come across that isn't trying to build something different? And as, I mean, I was trying to digest it, if it's a quarter a day per second, whatever it might end up being, fifty cents a day. What other arguments have been?
What other challenges, what other challenges are there? Um, you know, the money factor is probably the biggest thing. Um, the, you know, how it's, you know, if you build it, how are you gonna sustain it? Um, and then, there's like, well, they didn't listen to me, they didn't give my input on it. And so it just kind of, kind of gets this negative sort of atmosphere pushed behind it. Um, and they're just raving my taxes, that sort of thing. So, we try to avert that and, um, you know, bring the community into it, as I said. And, um, and that usually provides the foundation and the support to pull these things off in a big way. Um, I think Jim's got something else to say.
Well, and part of the challenge happens in a lot of growing communities where, um, over time, because they weren't offered, I'll say publicly, from political jurisdictions, the cities or the townships, so it became volunteer groups and volunteer-run organizations that had to provide it. And as you grow, if you don't go with the right plan, that can get pretty separate when all of a sudden now, the public is trying to duplicate things that have happened with volunteer coaches and volunteer parent organizations, and there's, there's a little bit of a conflict. I don't get that sense here, because everybody is trying to figure out, how do we do it together? We don't have everything we need, and you really kind of just have those out of necessity, not competition. And it's similar, you'll see in some communities where a Y may have started early and people think, I'm a Y member, I don't need to compete. And, and those are discussions, um, that go to the operational side. Is there an advantage to have a partner like the Y in the operating side? Uh, but in communities that have Ys, they can be in direct conflict with membership and some of the program activities. So it's not that every community faces that, but those are some of the reasons where you come into it. And then there are some folks who say, I'll never go in it, so I don't want to be supportive, even though it's a small amount of money. If I'm never gonna go in it, why should I pay for it? And so you always have the money side of good investment, but folks just not supported.
All the volunteers, like, are, um, basically, they're, uh, attempt to go on the negative side. And we, we, apparently it's a vote. I'm just curious.
Yeah, well, and it's interesting, because some communities, um, you know, Upper Arlington, took them forty years to get a community center in a very wealthy community, and it was because they couldn't get alignment of what they wanted. And then when they finally put something on the ballot, it was an advisory vote, they had figured out how to pay for it without increasing taxes. So now it was like, we can do it without raising your taxes, do you want us to do it? And they took some incredible, yeah. Yeah, it was a great vote. Then you have Albany with the fieldhouse, was a very close vote, you know, on deciding there, are you gonna build this, you know, hundred thousand square foot, oh, two hundred thousand square foot fieldhouse? It was a very, very, very close vote. And, and there was a lot of active campaigning among the community convincing neighbors. It was a neighbor-to-neighbor discussion, so.
It is a trend that is going on now, community centers. And especially in Central Ohio, if you just go do a little bit of research, you'll see, um, all the surrounding communities are building these things. Hillier just built one, we've mentioned Upper Arlington, uh, Grove City has been considering one, Albany is doing it. So in order for your community to stay competitive with other communities, um, these become necessary assets to draw other, you know, to build the population and allow the growth to continue. I think, uh, somebody made a comment that this will help, you know, maintain the value of my home, but also elevate it. It will. Um, you know, people are gonna look at Sunbury in the same way they, they've looked at Dublin all these years. Dublin was one of the first markets. So, once Dublin happened, then, you know, you started to have folks come in and start building these, 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 uh, community centers. And Dublin was built in like the mid-nineties, so keep that in mind. Yes, ma'am?
I could see that being a potential deterrent, I don't think, or, or, um, you know, people like small town, you know, people have plans and they like to quiet. And all these people coming in at once is, you know, scary. I just moved here a couple of years ago and I'm already like, oh my gosh, stop building more houses, what are we doing? Um, I could see that, if we have a community center, it's a draw for other people to move here, and that could be.
Think our cameraman had a clip.
Uh, I'm a Sunbury resident, um, and my wife and I are Realtors, we probably, well, I would say, we sell a lot of real estate in, in Big Momma's school district. So, we certainly feel the growth. Um, I'm from Hillier originally, had a rec center there, small, but functional, because there's not a lot of time in that rec center. Always grew up on land, we had horses, but the rec center would be where we go, all the friends hang out, play basketball, goof around, maybe get in a little lighthearted trouble, right? But like, that's way, way, way better than being at Kroger on a, on a Friday, when school lets out, and that's what the kids have to do. That, that's about it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I have a ten and a seven-year-old, yeah, hopefully it's not too late, but it might be too late for my seven-year-old to truly enjoy the community center as a kid. But I do hope, obviously with the growth of the community center, that we look at it almost like a multi-phase, hey, shoot for the moon, I'd say. Uh, future-proof it, right? But I, I don't know that the community has that appetite for it, but multi-phase. The easy stuff, the baseball fields, the soccer fields, lacrosse, the outdoor stuff, have the center with the basketball, maybe it's a multi-use court. Hardwood floor would be nice to have, I think, I'm sure a lot of basketball players will love the hardwood. And then pools and ice. I mean, I talked to Brian Sheldon, the athletic director of Big Momma's Schools, they're paying a fortune to go out of the district, have their swim teams and their dive teams and their, their, their hockey clubs and to go out of the district and play. It would be nice to have, but I do realize ice and water is pretty expensive.
It's a good point. Um, why don't you tell them about your son and where he used to go before the community center was built? I mean, I want everybody to listen to this Kroger thing and where the kids used to go. The U A was a unique thing, and I could not figure out why these kids were going where they were.
To be, I'm an Upper Arlington resident, so I don't, I'm an Upper Arlington resident, and I got to work on the community center for my own community. And I have a twelve-year-old son. So when we were doing this process, similar to this, three or four years ago, we went into the middle schools, because that was really the biggest demographic that the community was trying to find a home for, because they were going to Giant Eagle after school and just hanging out. I don't know if they bought anything, they were just hanging out at Giant Eagle at grocery store. store. My son was only eight at the time, and I thought, well, this is silly, like who lets their kids just hang out at Giant Eagle? Here I am, he's twelve, he hangs out at Giant Eagle. But the nice part is, now he goes to the community first, community center first, he works out with his friends, they play pool, they do all those things, and then they just go get a snack, and they go back to the community center. So I do think, you know, I, I didn't know that that was going to come out of it in my community, but it does make a big difference.
So, I look at money and taxes all day long, so I keep purping on that, I talked about money earlier. Why, probably way back to the sports piece that so many people talked about earlier, something else to consider, not just the renting facilities by the private organizations, we're going to consider hosting tournaments and other teams. I've seen the round sheets that come out of these tournaments, and it's pretty good. So we're talking about generating revenue to offset our costs, maybe we can elevate those baseball fields and basketball courts and pickleball courts and things like that, just a little bit, so that we can pay for some of these other things that we're wanting to build with this.
Perfect example of that is, there is a shortage of water, competitive water in central Ohio, has been for a long time. The, you know, Ohio State does not allow that to occur at their pool for some reason. So, there's like people that live on my street that are driving to Miami University in Oxford to use their competitive pool, because there's no place around here for them to go. There's indoor pools being built as we stand here today, but there's still, there's, there's a huge demand for it, and I, it's not overdone yet, so there's a huge opportunity here to consider that as a pool. So I think that's a good point.
Same with baseball tournaments, softball organizations, I've had multiple conversations, and we would want to be very choosy with some of these organizations, because they're not all created the same, I can tell you that, but yes.
Yeah, baseball in the last five years is just, new sports has just taken off. There's a shortage throughout the market, I'm sure.
Well, the shortage on the levy side. I like, I mean, I like the idea of it, I'm sure I'm going to use it, but my husband and I were both retired, we voted in the library, and I won one. I'm sure the fire department's going to be staffing for the new fire department, schools are going to be more schools, so I think I'm levied out. So any way that you can keep that levy down, or get costs, get money, or join with somebody else to help the older people, maybe, and I mean, I think it's great, I mean, I'm sure I know, but do I want more levies? I'm a little hesitant. It's a good idea, but there's a way to keep the costs down for us older people, and everybody there sits young and has kids, and it's great, you know, we didn't have more light on when we were growing up, but yeah, this sounds good.
I would say, not on the levy side, but on the membership side, there is tier cost to the membership, so if you're a senior and you want to be a member there, pay less than what maybe we might pay for our families.
Silver speakers.
Silver speakers, yeah, that, that is definitely taken into account.
I mean, it does another levy.
Yeah, that is totally understood, yes, absolutely.
And this is, like I said, it's a good idea, but it's a good idea for us, I don't know. I probably agree with you.
None of us want to pay more taxes. None of us want to pay more taxes.
Yeah, that happened last year, yeah.
I guess since you brought it up, I, I live in Berkshire, I sister-in-law and my daughter-in-law live in the community center, so I am in favor of the community center, don't be worried about funds, because twenty million is for, just to be clear, twenty million was for additions at the library. Upper Arlington was an eighty-five million dollar project, I don't know how you're going to, but, so it's not a quarter a day, that's all I just want to make, so I'm with you, and it's just the costs and the levies, that's, that's what I wrote in the survey, I think that's what we're, that's what we're seeing, but I am in favor of it, I do appreciate the community.
And, and also, there's other ways to look at how it gets financed, there's, there's multiple ways, and that's what Jim and his team are going to really dig into, and see what opportunities exist for the community. There's bonding, there's, there's, there's all these different methods of, of avenues to fund a project like this, and, you know, you're right, you know, and then you have to take into account the revenue generating side of it, so that, you know, can you get money built into it, coming out of it, to help pay the bills in the long term too? So all of that's going to be what that has to do with for, yes, man?
And I was understanding, I mean, you just said that silver speakers and some of those things, there is funding requirements for all the people that do sign up, so like, no, but like, so you, no, it doesn't, there's government funding. With your insurance.
I know this one is second thought, but I really want to repeat that, some of the comments made, I think we, we also need to kind of, I know you already mentioned, putting into some business, businesses into this, like how Upper Arlington partnered with OSU, if we can find, you know, big businesses, I know Kroger is coming as a huge facility close to us, I know we have some big companies, factories around, so if we can also kind of find a way, either they lease, either they, they put something into that to, you know, put their names into community centers effort, like paying back to the community type of things. I think if somebody can PR those things, maybe that also eliminates some of the burdens to those who are mentioning, like, how much I'm going to, you know, increase the taxes, or kind of cover some portion of it, and then generating the revenues, I think that would be a good plan to do this.
Yeah, and that's a good point, and that's something that usually gets incorporated into the funding, most all of the projects that we've talked about tonight have had a private philanthropic portion that, that was earmarked early. In Upper Arlington's case, it was about what, eight point five million dollars that they were able to raise, that was not having to be financed into the project, so not everybody can raise eight and a half million dollars on the project that we're working with Grove City, they've targeted a million and a half that they think they could raise just through the businesses and folks who all want to participate. Another thing that you look at, and Ualbany is a good example with the Field House, they are getting about two and a half million dollars of FFNE, so furniture fixtures, some of the equipment donated by Amazon, because, you know, there they have a lot of data centers, understand who your partners are, but they're actually wanting to come in and fund some of that cause because of the community use. So we don't lose track of that, and it's actually every project that we probably all work on collectively, there's always a gap somewhere, privately we have gaps in what we have to pay for, but in these projects too, and you look at what are, you know, what's the capacity of the communities to support it, and then what else do we have to find to get it to reality? And so I would say that's part of, it's a lot of work to figure it out, but there are options. Things that you have to worry about, just because we always like to make sure you know what's ahead of you, even opportunities with tournament, tournament facilities, which we also do, the balance becomes is, we never want your kids not to be able to get into the facility that you're paying for because you're chasing another dollar. So it's part of the planning, so both can occur, and it is part of the planning, because if you don't plan for it, you'll all be mad, or you'll make a lot of money. It'll be one of those two things. So it's, it's how do you figure that out, it becomes a key component to it. Likewise, in the cases when you look at partners actually being in the building, which like Upper Arlington and Hilliard have done with OSU, it's important based on your financing structure, so most of the time you're going to be issuing non-taxable debt, public debt, which is the lowest cost to you. If you bring a private entity into your publicly funded facility, you can mess up the tax position of the notes, and all of a sudden, you're paying more money. And so we balance those things, and so there are ways to do it, but it's just, you know, it's not as easy as saying, we want to do it, it's finding that balance. But those are all great tools for you to help supplement the money that you can support putting into it.
If, if I could, just a bit, I mean, we want to be conscious of the time, Keith, so if we haven't heard from anybody, let's make sure we do that, and then of course, let's remind people about the, about the survey.
So just for the record, my name's Christine Tripp, I have three boys, we live right around the corner, just for the record, looking for an indoor and outdoor pool, just today we came from Westerville, would love that, and I know we've talked a lot about revenue, I guess, revenue generators, and I wonder if we could also think about the land, and how we could generate revenue, not by sports, but for instance, like in my own office, they make most of their revenue on allowing small businesses to rent the land and build, so think about it that way.
Great, thank you.
In the back, Jim works for Sunbury, and we did a vote for the library expansion, we enjoyed that, and books, and that keeps a lot of trouble, as well as the sports, and my kids grow up from, we have a two-year-old grandson, so it would be great if he, you know, you were a player, you're not a player, and school, so we, and most of our girls are just starting up.
Awesome, that's great, thank you.
So, we shop, eat, play, everything, Sunbury community here would consider ourselves part of the community, but we actually love it, Trent Township, so I guess one of the things to consider is just not making it cost prohibitive, so we just became members of the Pan A18, I would look at Westerville, but Westville, so now our options are either, you know, went to Westerville, go through the community, or if we were that, we're through the community, or down to get around these communities, so just making it accessible to more people, so just thinking about that too, though Trent Township wasn't, you know, interested in coming along on this ride, that's not representative of everybody in the community.
Your last question on the survey has to do with operations, and it's going to be with.
Could you please stand up?
The last question on the survey has to do with operations, and if it's an external operator, like A18, or if it's internal, can we hear benefits to both and negatives to both? Is it going to cost us more if we have someone else coming and run it? Is it going to cost us more if we run it? Like, where's, where's that playing?
Typically, your operational costs are not going to be different, it's going to cost whether the Y be the operator or the community, it's a matter of, with the Y in that structure would be taking a portion of the program fees to offset their costs, so it's a matter of really, you're still going to operate the facility in the same cost factor. What we typically try to do is look at cost recovery, so cost recovery of a facility is basically, what, what can you collect from membership fees, but also all those program fees, so the idea is, the more that you can raise from the operation of the facility, it goes to the operation of the facility, it lowers the cost. You know, one of the, at average, you're looking at about seventy-five percent, you'd like to strive for seventy-five percent of the, the operational cost to be recovered by the people who are using the facility. That lessens the burden on seniors and others who aren't going in, so it's not like trying to get the community to pay for everything. Certainly you can target up to a hundred percent, right? That's what you'd strive to do, but you're typically going to be about seventy-five percent recoverable, which means the subsidy of the operation is about twenty-five percent of the cost of operations, which is.
Right, or if the Y runs?
Well, you're going to pay for it one way or another, so that twenty-five percent is going to be covered as a cost, so if the Y's doing it, they're going to be paid to do it, or expect it out of the program, so it just kind of pushes the money back and forth a little bit. But we're, but it's certainly worth further exploration, I mean, that's part of what we'll be looking at, is looking at operational model and partners to see what is the right one, because every community center is different, every community is different, and it's not one cookie cutter approach, so we look at it all ways to tell you, this is what we think is the best approach.
Okay, and my second question is, there's a lot of people in here that are involved in lacrosse, we hear from baseball, and all those different things, if we were running it, if the community was running it themselves, would those people be able to be inserted in and be a part of it, or does it, is it separate sports that would be ran by them as well, like separate rec groups, does that, am I explaining that well?
Yeah, well, and that's part of what I talked about before, is that conflict, I think you never want to have that kind of conflict, I think it's, how do you incorporate everything so those who are functioning, you become facilities, and it's worked out, schedule, time, cost, there's no reason, because then you're adding to the operational cost to all of the public partners, right? So that's an extra cost.
If we went with a separate person running it like the Y, would they typically come in with their own set of groups of rec sports and stuff? Would we be able to incorporate the other groups that are already established here, or is that?
You can do both, I mean, the Reynoldsburg, I think there's a combination of some public groups that are using the facility that's co-owned by the Y at Reynoldsburg, it's just doubling the details of working out the arrangements and how it works.
I just want to make sure that they're represented as well, we have a whole, a whole slew of them, I mean, we've got football now, we've got soccer, we've got all these different ones, I'd hate to see that be pushed out because we're here trying to get a community center that has their own grounds.
Yeah, there's no reason to duplicate, that, that creates a split among what's already there, and I don't think that's the intent of, of the board, it's how do we help support what's going on in the community.
A lot of those sports groups are segmented, they're separated, so it'd be nice that they could all have one space where they could work together collaboratively versus everybody's got their own agenda, maybe scheduling conflicts and.
Even if schedules can work together.
It'd be nice to call one person, if you're a baseball, if you're a lacrosse, a hockey, whatever, say.
If you back off for all your feelings, then they'll be, that's the fact, I'll do three, you're building a recreation. Every township right now, it's going to happen. Goes to my question though, why haven't the other towns?
Joe.
We should form a civil service, um, we formed this, and then we started one of the two, the goal was to get that, just to reiterate, I don't know, I'll take thirty seconds, and we just didn't get that far, unfortunately, like, not all communities want to play together, and all, all that, this was, this was February twenty, twenty eight, February twenty eighth, we were Harlem Township Strategic Planning Committee said they wanted to, it was a great time, okay, so, like, can't unvacate, I suppose, at this point, and unfortunately, we're not saying you can't like come and use the facility, you have to get built.
What I'm saying is, have we gone back, because I know they have a rec park, well, the rec is small, so like, I don't, can't imagine what it's going to.
Yeah, I understand, I agree with you, we try to help, it's just all.
Correct, as a, as a township member.
We'll talk to the board about this, this is me sure from Harlem, we had several folks from border and things, and I'm not trying to dismiss your comment, but, it's like, this is on track right now, and this board, I think you're going to have to work with that, and, and Harlem Township trustees are going to have to work with this board, just try to advocate.
And there's a new board, we just all have. But my other question would be, right now, if you said you can't get anything, we have to get some solid to be able to even start funding this, so that means we're looking at least one year?
Well, I've never done this either, actually Sunbury, Berkshire, and Delena have funded this with startup costs, that's how we hired the board, it's hired consultants, attorneys, you know, it's formed into a legal entity, I think we budgeted for next year, it's about a hundred thousand dollars, I'm not mistaken, Sunbury's carrying about fifty thousand of that cost, Berkshire's forty thousand, Delena's ten thousand, it's all based on population and just some, so, in order to, yeah, purchase land, purchase, things like that, yeah, it would have to be a long effort, and that's.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, because right now I feel like we're really missing the boat, like, as we all said, everybody's scrambling to buy facilities, if we start building, you know, the baseball fields, the lacrosse fields, yes, you're going to want terfs, because again, we're ranked, so, whatever, but if we keep pushing it out, we're just going to lose it, and then we're going to lease land, and the developer's going to come in and say, okay, well, we'll give you ten acres to build this.
Let me sure, they're not pushing it out, this is as fast as this board could possibly go. Let me jump in, let me jump in the gun, this, this board did not exist in February of this year, it's November, in nine months, they've had to like hire all these folks, they've had to buy insurance, you had to like, form a legal, no, I don't really do, because I wanted to go faster than you wanted to go back. It can't, we're doing, we're dealing with the public's money, it's a process, and you set out a schedule.
Yeah, and if I can just speak to that, I mean, from the time we were, we were formed, I mean, we were formed out of nothing, I mean, we had to go, we had to get a bank account, we had to get insurance, I was calling insurance brokers, trying to explain what we were, to even try to get quotes, which was a challenge, and, you know, we, we went through a process, we did just go with Pazubi right off the gate, we talked to people, we had a competitive solicitation process before we spent taxpayer dollars to move forward with this process. So, we want this as much as everybody, but we want to do it the right way, so we have moved as quickly as we can, but also we'll try to be responsible and do it the right way at the same time.
And Jonah, I've been talking about this for three years, right? Like, I, when I, I used to live in Sunbury, I joined the planning. I used to live in Sunbury, I joined the Planning and Zoning Commission. I told Joe, the first meeting was, I want to build a community center here. I mean, this is not, this is, this takes time. It takes money. It takes effort. Like, I tried to do it on the private, privately myself. It was not feasible. So I hear you. We don't want to waste any more time. The goal is to get a ballot measure, you know, a year from now. And so we can get money so we can start construction as soon as possible. Like, that's, that's the goal. So it's, we're not, we're moving as quickly as possible.
And thank you all for volunteering all your time and efforts because that is great.
So Pete, I know we've had a hand up in the back.
All right, I'm really.
Yes, and I'm trying for a while.
Something that I just wanted to touch base on because I realized there are a lot of parents and we have young kids in the communities. I'm the president for the New Year Program. And it's kind of crazy to see that like we're all different. I know there's a lot of different youth programs here and we're all here for the same reason too. But if there is for like marketing purposes, maybe, I would say, reach out to those, like our programs because I just have to kind of, someone mentioned it to me and then we shared it. But if there is, I know we do have a board for it and there are different programs and aren't a part of BWI itself. But it's like the trickle down effect. So there's so many kids that they might not do it in middle school, but they're all going to be affected. And we have a hundred and eighty-seven children just this year. So it's like, if we could get that out to our parents, that's kind of why this came, so we can pass the information on. So whether they're youth programs or not, like, we have access to talk to all of them. So this is great. But like I said, I would never even imagine that there'd be football and baseball and all the different sports. So it is great, but to kind of trickle down to get this out there, that would be great.
Great. Thank you.
One more question.
I just wanted to make a quick statement of appreciation that the broker has referred to this project as a community center, not as a rec center. That this is so much more than just a place to play sports, but a place for everyone in the community to have a place. And I appreciate that because I think that really changes the mindset of what we're trying to build, which is a stronger community, not just a place to keep kids out of trouble or a place where somebody can go play basketball or a cheaper place to work out, but a place where the community as a whole feels that they have a place within the community that they can find their passion and their enthusiasm. So I appreciate that.
Wow, that, that is a great way. Tell them, again, we'll, how we'll get the, the survey out. Obviously, there's a, there's a QR code up there. The three jurisdictions, we'll get that out tomorrow on our website. We'll encourage you to share the way you've done that. We do also though appreciate that we do need to do more with respect to the charity in terms of communication. So thank you for that good reminder.
So I would just add that on that QR code when you take the survey, there is a link or a spot where you can fill in your email address. So if you would like continued updates about the upcoming meetings or any other questions that got shot up, make sure you include your email when you take that survey as well.
All right, we do have to close the meeting.
Yeah. And if you can't make it the future community engagement meetings, there will be surveys issued at each one of those too, that basically represent what is a community engagement.
Great. Thank you. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, so that concludes the presentation we have from, thank you, I forget every time. So that concludes the presentation we have from Pazuti. This, this meeting did have a little bit of a different format than our typical meetings. Typically, we just do board business and vote on board matters. So typically, it is not this type of public, you know, back and forth. So we do have a general just public comment portion at the end of all of our meetings, to the extent that anybody has a comment that they would like to make directly to the board, you're welcome to do that now. Otherwise, I think we'll be concluding. Does anybody have any other comments? Thank you. Yeah. And again, I just really do want to thank everyone so much for coming tonight. I was worried we wouldn't have that many people here. I was relieved when I pulled it and it was all out of cars. So thank you.
So how about a motion?
Yep, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Move the second, Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Guzakio?
Yes.
Ms. Sabata? Ms. Gregor?
Yes.
Mr. Coy?
Yes.
Sixty A's motion through. We are adjourned.